So, welcome everyone. I just pressed on the recording because many had requested for it. So we'll start with the program. So His Grace Sankushundas Adhikari Pravati is a bona fide spiritual master, a disciple of the greatest exponent of India's ancient Vedic teachings, that is His Divine Grace A.C. Bhaktivedanta Swami Shilpa Prabhupada. For half a century, he has been enlightening the illusionant suffering souls on this planet with this most sublime enlightening knowledge of Krishna consciousness, which when followed delivers one from all anxieties and qualities and qualifies one to enter the spiritual world upon leaving his or her present material body. And as a means to reach the most people across all boundaries of nationality, race, or creed, he has made this supreme knowledge of Krishna consciousness freely available over the internet through his most famous e-course titled as the Ultimate Self-Realization Course. And as an adjunct to this course, his realizations and selected correspondence are also made available via Thought for the Day, an online magazine. It's an email that comes every day, which is sent daily via the internet to inspire and guide his tens and thousands of followers and the students around the group. One can freely subscribe to this. I'll share the link during the chat also at www.jointcourse.com. I had the privilege to meet with Pravati back in America when I was a student. One of Pravati's disciples was serving at Iskcon Columbus, and that's where I got to know about Pravati. And I even visited Texas, his place. I was there staying with one of his students for a week, and that's the time I had visited Pravati's ashram. And Pravati and Mathaji, that's where I met them. And then after that, I had introduced my sister and brother-in-law. They were living in Muscat, and I was really trying how, you know, help them in Krishna consciousness. When I got to meet with Pravati and Mathaji and got to know that they do online programs. Now, in the last one and a half years or two years because of COVID, we have now started doing online programs. And Pravati had already envisioned the need of this online activity and engagement almost one and a half decades before. So that's how my family members got connected with Pravati, and that's how Pravati and Mathaji had been guiding them and inspiring all of us. So, thank you so much, Pravati, for taking out your valuable time and meeting with all of us here today morning. On behalf of all the devotees here, I sincerely welcome you. Thank you so much. Yes, yes, Pravati, we can hear you. Thank you, thank you, Pravati, please.
So today we're reading from Shyamad Bhagavad Gita, as it is, a translation prepared by His Divine Grace, Shilpa Prabhupada, Rajya Vidya, Chapter 9, Text Number 2. This knowledge is the king of all education, the most secret of all secrets. It is the purest knowledge because it gives direct perception, self-realization. It is the perfection of religion. It is everlasting and joyfully performed. The king of edu... The most secret of all secrets, the purest knowledge. How much do you find out the most secret of all secrets? You'd be very fortunate to perceive that information. There's many top secrets in the world, but none of them are as secret as this. This is the topmost of all secrets. And to become blessed with this understanding, one of this most secret of all secrets, we simply have to hear the submission from the bona fide spiritual master, the teachings of Lord Krishna. And it becomes revealed. People are searching for this, searching for that, looking for success, looking for happiness, looking for so many things to be happy and satisfied. They're always coming up frustrated. And even if temporarily, they think they're happy and satisfied, they mean wealthy, or famous, or powerful. It's all taken away. Old age, disease, and death takes away everything. Time and tide wait for no man. So all their material successes, their so-called happiness, it's all eroded away by time. Everything's taken away. The only person who can actually truly be happy is the person who is Krishna conscious. Because his happiness is not based on some temporary success in the material world. His happiness is based on his original loving relationship with Lord Shri Krishna, the supreme personality of God. Krishna is the source of all existence. Everything that exists is his emanation. All living entities are his emanated energy. Krishna has a desire to enjoy loving relationships. Therefore, from himself, he emanates an unlimited number of living beings, so he can enjoy an infinite number of loving relationships. He's so powerful, he can have a personal one-on-one relationship with an intimate number of living... with an infinite number of living beings. That's his unlimited power. So that love has to be voluntary. You can't force someone to love you, love you. Put a gun at them, "Love you, I'll blow your brains out." It has to be voluntary, it can't be forced. So Krishna gives everyone that free choice, "Love me or leave me." But unfortunately, there's this minute, infinitesimal fraction of living entities who make a big, big mistake. And they try to enjoy separately from this material existence. We're here in small insignificant number of living entities in the spiritual world. We're just a little tiny fraction of a fraction of a fraction of the living beings in the spiritual world who are understanding what is my true happiness, what is the perfection of my existence, a sweet Krishna who will bend to the source of all existence. So for those unfortunate souls, the stupid, stupid take, who try to enjoy separately from Krishna. Krishna comes personally, yada yada hi dharma. Ila bharata, bhuta namo dharma. Atta dhammanam, shodanaya. Krishna comes again and again and again, deliver us. And he comes, and even more mercifully, he comes, His Lord Chaitanya, to show us how easy it is to become a self-realized soul. He just chant Hare Krishna and dance in ecstasy. And he sends great personalities like Bhaktimadhatukur, Bhaktisiddhanasarsvadipukur. His Divine Grace, Om Vishnu Padparnama Hum, A.C. Bhaktivedanta, three dandigos, Smami Maayajapapa. He sends these great, great personalities who try to help us out of this illusion we have, thinking we can enjoy separately from Krishna. Thinking I can enjoy by gratifying my tongue, my belly, my genitals, my false ego. We're very much deluded here in this material world. Mayasukaya, that is all captured. So, to get out of Mayasukaya, it's not just some theoretical thing. And someone tells you there's something higher than material pleasures. You go, "Okay, that's fine." But if someone can actually give you the taste, so you can actually experience it. Someone can give you an actual taste of that pleasure which exceeds material sense gratification millions and billions and trillions and quadrillions of times. Then you can go, "Oh, this is real. This is not simply some dogma." This is actually real. This is scientific. It's like when I was a kid in high school, the teacher said, "Students, H2O equals water." So we weren't asked to accept it blindly. She took us down to the hall of the laboratory, and we did it in our test tube. I took two parts of hydrogen and one part of oxygen. And lo and behold, what did I get in my test tube? Water. So it wasn't blind faith. So in a similar way, the bona fide spiritual master, the vishnava preachers, the supreme lord, they don't ask us to blindly accept this. He said, "Here, try this, check it out, chant these names." Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hari Hari. Hari Rama, Hari Rama, Dharma, Dharma, Hari. With an open mind, and just see what the result is. Just try it. Try it, you'll love it. Because actually, this chanting of Hare Krishna connects us, gives us a perfect connection with our actual identity, eternal, all blissful, fully cognizant identities. You actually come, you absorb yourself in the Hare Krishna mantra. You're actually turning on your actual identity. Jivara surupahai Krishnaera nichadas, constitutional position of the living entity as the eternal servant of Krishna. So this is something you actually experience it. You actually taste it. This is the ultimate thrill. And you can actually taste this ultimate thrill at every minute once you get properly tuned in. You have to properly tune in. It's like when I was a kid, I used to listen to the radio. That was my pastime in summer. I didn't know anything about Krishna consciousness. I didn't even, Papa, I didn't come to America yet back in the early 60s. So I would just listen to the radio. That was my pastime during the time. I didn't have anything to do, I'd just listen to the media. I'm listening, you tune into my channel. If you're slightly off the channel, you get all kinds of static. Static, you see. So you want to get a good clear reception, the radio, you gotta really tune. In fact, my dad, he liked to listen to music. They had stereo radio. He used to listen to stereo radio music. And on his radio, he had a special... He had two tuning knobs, the tuning knob and a fine tuning knob. So in a similar way, we have to tune in to Krishna, and then we have to fine tune our tunings. Tuning is not... tuning in is not enough. Simply chanting Hare Krishna is not enough. Then you have, now you're chanting Hare Krishna. Now you've defined tune your chanting by avoiding the ten offenses. If the offenses are there, and there's all kinds of static in the way of the body, you're not getting the pure name. You're getting a covered version of the name. The full potency is not coming through. Of course, some potency is there. But the more we remove the offenses, the more the potency comes. In fact, Prabha explained what is the potency of pure chanting. This is really amazing, right there in his books. Shilpa Prabhupada says that if one chants the holy name of the Lord without offense, I mean, it's completely free from all offenses, even the most subtle ones, absolutely free from all... Then he becomes Jagad Guru. And under his influence, the whole world takes up chanting with Krishna. Just think about that for a minute. We actually have a spiritual revolution, potential spiritual revolution, right there in our bead bags. Can you imagine that? You have a spiritual, potential spiritual revolution right there in your bead bag. Even one of us can master this art of purely chanting without any offense. I mean, absolutely, totally free from all offenses. Not even, you know, a fraction of a fraction of a fraction of a fraction of offense, absolute purity. Then that one devotee can have an uplifting impact, deliver all the living beings who are caught up in this material existence back down like a god. So we should take this process very seriously. For my deliverance and the deliverance of all the living entities who are suffering here in the cycle of birth and death. Prabha, the verse continues, "And because it gives direct perception of the self-realization, it's the perfection of religion." This is interesting. Nowadays, religion, what do they think of? When you say religion, what do they think? Oh, some rules and regulations, some sentimental sect. The Muslim religion, the Christian religion, the Jewish religion, the Hindu religion. They don't understand what religion actually means. Actually, it comes in the Latin word religio, which means to reconnect. That's what religion actually means, to reconnect that supreme person is the source of all existence. So it's not a matter of what religion do you belong to. No, that's a false conception. Are you religious or not? That's the real, that's the only, that's the only choice. You're either religious or you're not. You're either connected to that supreme person, the source of all existence, or you're not connected. You can do it as a Christian, as a Muslim, as a Sikh, a Jain, a Hindu. You can do it in any ism. If you're fully absorbed in the loving service of that supreme person, then you're a perfect, you're a perfect religion. So we're not Hindus here. We're not any of these designations. If I look like a Hindu, actually, I have my Christian family. It's interesting to know that actually, when I came to... My coming to Krishna consciousness was based on studying the Bible, interesting to know. I was a young spiritual seeker, trying to figure out how can I become self-realized? I knew there was something called self-creditation, but I didn't know how to achieve it. And I knew Lord Jesus Christ was self-realized. So I was trying to figure out what was the secret of Lord Jesus that made him a self-realized soul? So I was reading the Bible every morning, trying to figure out what made Jesus Christ a self-realized soul. And one day, I found it. He says, in the Bible, it's quoted, "Father, not my will, but thy will." Praising God, praying to God, "Father, not my will, but thy will be mine." Ah, that's it. I knew now what I had to do to become self-realized. I similarly didn't do what God wanted me to do, not what I wanted to do. But I had one problem. I didn't know what God wanted me to do. Now, in the Bible, there was one man named Saul, and he was on his way to Damascus. And on the way to Damascus, God gave him a revelation. He said, "You are now Paul, and this is your mission." So then Christianity is called a Damascus experience, what God reveals to you, what is your duty. So I was waiting for my Damascus experience, but it wasn't coming. I wanted God to reveal to me what was my duty. So those days, I was a singer-songwriter, hippie singer-song. I was doing a little gig at a vegetarian co-op up there singing one of my songs. And it was kind of depressing for my musician's ego. Only one little girl in the audience. One little girl. My musician's ego, oh. But it was amazing. After I finished that song, that little girl read my mind. She came up to me after the song, and she said, "Don't worry, God can hear you." And I went, "Wow, that's amazing." She went, that was a message from God himself to the little girl. And she tried to think about it. "God can hear me," was what she said. I was waiting, I could not hear God, you see. I wanted to hear His instruction on what I'm supposed to do in my life. I couldn't hear Him. But now, it was the little girl, she said, "You can't hear me, but I can hear you." Ah-ha! Now I had a new mantra. It was called, "Dear God, please guide me how I can become your perfect servant." And I was praying, get up every morning. I'm studying the Bible, and I was praying, "Dear God, please guide me, I'm becoming a perfect servant." And a few days later, there's a knock on the door. I was staying with one of my music fans. I didn't work a job. I was just hippie, director, singing, writing songs. But one of Mike's friends named Margaret from down the street, she came to tell Mike, "Oh, Mike, there's a Hare Krishna Swami in town. He'll be in my apartment in one hour." So I went down there a hour later, and who was it? His holy name is Vishnu Janaswamy. So I was praying to God to guide me how to become His perfect servant. And He sent Vishnu Janaswamy. Vishnu Janaswamy got inspired by my Krishna's remembrance to come to Austin, to open a center here. So just by associating with this Swami, I realized this is the perfection of my existence and must surrender to Krishna. So the real perfection of religion is to surrender to Krishna. Or you can call Him God or Allah, Jehovah, but to fully surrender to that supreme person. He has unlimited name. But to fully surrender to that supreme person, now, your will and not my will, not what I want to do, but what you want me to do. In our Krishna Conscious Movement, it's, Prabhupada has spelled it out very thoroughly and very scientifically, exactly how we can live in such a way that pleases God. You're gonna have to guess. You know exactly what to do, regularly chant the holy names, hear the scriptures, sing in the kirtan, worship deities. We know exactly what to do. We know what to avoid. No, this is sex, no meat eating, no intoxication, okay? Even in married life, you see, we don't have sex for fun. Sex for fun is illicit, even if you're married. You don't want to have sex for fun, no. Prabha said the standard for sex is this. You're married. Number two, you get the blessing of your spiritual master, Gurudeva. We'd like to have a child. You give us your blessings for that. Without those blessings, you don't perceive. You're married, you get the permission, the blessings of your spiritual master. And then, once in a month, four to six days after the menstrual cycle, after the husband and wife both chant, at least, Prabha said, at least 50 rounds of janta. Then you have sex life to try to attract a highly qualified spiritual being to take birth in your family. So that's the standard for sex life in Krishna Conscious. That's Krishna conscious sex life. That sex life, Krishna says, "I am that sex life." Right? Like Giti says, "I am that sex life," which is not contrary to those principles. So Krishna is His holy name, and he's also that kind of sex life, strictly according to Prabhupada's teachings. So we have to learn how to become very fixed in doing exactly what Prabhupada teaches, you see. If we try to mix in a little sense gratification here, a little sense gratification there, what will happen? It's just like Christianity is so far deviated now. Christians are running slaughterhouses, even though the Bible says, "Thou should not kill." The Christians are operating huge slaughterhouses. And it became so... So yes, if we allow little things to come into Iskcon, little sense gratification here, a little there, it's no harm. It'll gradually completely turn the whole thing around. Should we, we should be very strict and keep it exactly according to Prabhupada's teachings. That's actually ecstatic. To mix in material sense gratification is poison. It's spoiled. You can't taste the nectar. You can't taste the ultimate thrill at every minute if you're mixing in sense gratification. If you're keeping it absolutely pure, you can taste the ultimate thrill at every minute. What is that thrill? Being connected to Krishna, with nothing in between, nothing blocking, your loving reciprocation. Because Krishna is actually present. He's present within your heart. He's within every reality, between every atom. There's nowhere Krishna is not present. Krishna is actually right there with you right now, wherever you are, in India, or Europe, or Hawaii, or South America, wherever you're listening right now. Krishna is right there with you in your room right now. And if one develops pure loving feelings for that person, you'll actually see Him. Pramanjana chiri tabhakti valochana. Sam taksa dhrinayeshivalo kayanti. Yama shama sunyarama chintyaganas varupam. Govindam adipuru shamam damaham. I worship Govinda, the Prime Minister of the Lord, who is Shama Sundar, Krishna himself, with inconceivable, unnumerable attributes from the pure devotee see, in their heart of hearts, with the eye of devotion, tinge with the sap of love. And Prabha said, not only is he within, he's externally there, present as well. So we need to come to that point. And even Prabha personally told me to become qualified to see Krishna face-to-face. I'm still working on it. But that is actually there. As a morning, as a lecturer, Prabha, I hear it again and again. I'm going to take morning walks. It's so wonderful lecture. Prabha is saying, "The devotee should be determined, 'I must see Krishna, I must see Krishna, I must see Krishna in this life.'" Once you become determined, "I must become completely pure in heart so Krishna reveals Himself," that determination should be there. And even Prabha says, even if one has the desire to see Krishna for some material reason, still, when he becomes purified. He has a really wonderful story about a true story about a thief. And he heard from a Bhagavad Gita reciter that this little boy named Krishna, he's wandering in the Vandavan forest all alone, loaded with valuable jewels. And, "Oh, a little boy wandering all alone in the forest of Vandavan, loaded with valuable jewels. I must go to Vandavan and find that boy. And that way, I can become a millionaire overnight, just begging for some of the jewels." So he went there. And sure enough, Krishna revealed Himself in the forest of Vandavan. And he was seeing all those valuable jewels. And he said, "Oh, Krishna, you have so many valuable jewels. Can you give me some?" And Krishna, as the son and mother just says, "Oh, no, 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 no." Mother just said that she'll be very angry. She was going, "I cannot give." But by that, even though he came to Krishna with all material desires, just by seeing Krishna, he became a pure devotee. And Krishna said, "All right, you can take." But he had no more desire for jewels. So somehow, we must develop that desire to see Krishna. Somehow, we must become qualified to see Krishna. No more lust. I gotta get rid of lust, get rid of the anger, lust, anger, greed, madness, illusion, and the... I must kick them all out, so I become fully purified, fully qualified to see Krishna face-to-face at every minute. So, this process works. This process is very, very powerful. This process is very, very, very powerful. It really works. So we have to have full faith in the teachings of Shilpa Prabhupada. We have to fully surrender ourselves to the teachings of Shilpa Prabhupada with our every thought, word, and deed in all times, places, and circumstances. We shouldn't cheat ourselves by trying to enjoy separately from Krishna. That's our foolishness. Here we are, still trying to enjoy separately from Krishna. But actually, there is no enjoyment separately from Krishna. That's simply an illusion of there's any enjoyment separate from Krishna. The only true happiness is in loving relationship with that all beautiful, all powerful, all renowned, all famous, all wise, and all wealthy person named Krishna, who's standing in the bank of the Jumuna in the beautiful, moonlight of the chart season, playing the fifth murder in his flute to attract all the gopie girls to come dance for us. Prabha said, even they, actually, they came to him out of lusty desires to enjoy the little boy, the beautiful boy. They became completely purified upon seeing Krishna. No more lusty desire. Just, "I want to please my beloved Krishna." Servatorship, friendship, parental and conjugal. Every one of us has a relationship in one of these primary verses. So we don't want to jump to it artificially. Well, I'm sure I'm a gopie. No, we just want to be the sold-out servant of our spiritual master. That's the key. I must be completely sold-out servant of my spiritual master. That my every thought, my every word, my every deed in all times, places, and circumstances must give him unlimited pleasure. That's the mood we have to be in. That mood is what'll get us back to our original relation with Krishna. Don't try to jump to your verse. Just be the totally sold-out servant of your spiritual master, and then Krishna will reveal everything to you in the course of time. So we should not cheat ourselves, and we shouldn't cheat others, right? Embracing anything besides pure devotional service. Any embracing of anything besides pure devotional service, whether it's material sense gratification or mixed devotional service. We're simply cheating ourselves and cheating everyone else. So let's not be foolish, let's not be stupid, let us not be asinine to try to embrace anything besides pure devotional service of Krishna. Let my every thought, my every word, my every deed in all times, places, and circumstances give unlimited pleasure to my beloved Lord Shri Krishna. That should be the mood. That should be the... Krishna, please help us. Please help us come to that pure, loving, devotional service movement. Anything besides that is actually very inauspicious. Any... Any, any, any state of conscience, besides pure, unlikely devotion to Krishna is a very inauspicious thing. So why should we hold on to inauspicious things? We should go for pure auspiciousness. From now on, at every second, and every time, every place, every situation, every person, with my, whether I'm alone, or with my family members, with friends, with strangers, in my office where I work, in every situation, let me be in that pure, loving service to Krishna. No other, no other duty. That's our only duty, we have one duty, and one duty only. Sabradhaman prajna ja, ma me kung shada nan braja, aham tamsabapapibo, mokshishami ma shuchan. Give up all the duties and obligations, take one duty and one duty and one obligation only, and that is to be my fully sold out servants. That way Krishna will free us from all of our sinful reactions, you know how much sinful reactions we have? How much karma we have from millions and billions of births? We're really heavily entangled in karma, you see, but it doesn't matter how many millions, and billions, and trillions, and quadrillions of lifetimes of bad karma you may bring with you. As you try to approach Krishna, Krishna says, okay, I'll wipe it out immediately, I see you're fully submitted, I immediately take away all your karmas. So why should we cheat ourselves by embracing anything besides pure devotional service? Does that make any sense? To try to embrace, take anything besides pure devotional service? We should become very, very eager, I must become Krishna's pure devotee. Nothing else to do, nothing else to think about, nothing else to talk about. Let me now fully dedicate myself to awaking my Krishna consciousness, and on the order of Shilpa Pavada, and dor chitanyamaa prabhu, zarideka tarekaha, Krishna pradesh, amara agaya guru, hoyutayadesh, whomever you meet, instruct them in the teachings of Krishna. And this way, on my order, you become guru, and you deliver the people of this, this country or this world. It's the duty of every one of us to awaken the world to Krishna consciousness. And actually, we should become very, very eager. Papa says, if one, if one purely practices this process, he can deliver the whole world. So we should try to become, not only for our own deliverance, but for the sake of all the living entities who are suffering here in the cycle of birth and death, people we know, people we don't know, all the living entities. We should seriously cultivate pure devotional service, because if we become absolute pure devotees, we can liberate all the living entities who are suffering here in this material existence, back to home, back to God. That should be our goal, you see, let me become the pure devotee, let me now think, speak, and act in such a way that can be, help all the living entities who are caught up in this material existence, become fully qualified to go back to home, back to God. That's our duty, given by dor chitanyama. So why should we torture ourselves, there's unlimited, there's unlimited nectar we have in Krishna consciousness. Why should we torture ourselves by holding on to anything besides pure devotional service? Isn't it stupid? But yet we do it, we go on holding on to other things besides pure devotional service, thinking there's pleasure there. Even though we've heard, there's no pleasure outside of pure devotional service, we still hold on to this idea, hope against hope, I can enjoy separately from Krishna, but actually we cannot. Any state of mind, any, any spoken word, anything we do, anything that's not purely connecting with Krishna is actually detrimental for our happiness. Why should you do something which is detrimental for your happiness, when you can do something which is unlimitably beneficial for you, you see? That's we have to learn how to get rid of all the inauspiciousities within our hearts, and have one desire, and one desire only, that is to give unlimited Krishna, Krishna, with my every thought, word, and deed, in all times, places, and circumstances. Krishna Consciousness is simple for the simple and difficult for the crooked. Why do we have difficulty? Because we're still crooked. Crooked means we're trying to enjoy separately from Krishna. So we have to realize the absolute futility of trying to enjoy separately from Krishna. And say, okay, I've been a fool and a rascal for millions of lifetimes, and tried to enjoy separately from Krishna. And even now, as a devotee, I'm still subtly holding on this desire to try and enjoy separately from Krishna. So now, my dear Lord, please remove this desire from my heart. Please, my dear Lord, bless me, I have only one desire from now on, for all eternity, and that is to give you unlimited pleasure with my every thought, word, and deed, in all times, places, and circumstances. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare, Hare Rama, Hare Nama, Nama, Nama. So now I can, if there's any questions, I'll be happy to help you to, you know, happy to try to answer them, they can be typed in, I see there's a chat window here. Someone can type it in, or they can speak it. I can speak it, moderator, the... If anybody has a question, I'm happy to try to answer it.
Hare Krishna. Okay, Manoj, go ahead.
Yeah, actually, thanks Maharajee, you have spoken about self-realization and the pure devotional service, but I'm a much, far, far away from this, I think, because when I contemplate, because today I'm seeing that one verse in Bhagavad Gita, that Krishna 2.3, that Krishna tells Arjuna that do not yield as the degraded importance, give, give off such petty weakness of the heart. Actually, Arjuna is having petty weakness of heart not to fight. But I have so many petty weaknesses of heart, so how will I overcome the weakness of heart?
How do you overcome weakness of heart? Do you chant sixteen rounds every day?
Ah, yes, yes Maharajee.
You following the Furbagat principles?
Ah, no Maharajee.
Yeah, yeah, well, if you actually put a little faith in this process, if you follow those principles, you will enter in a higher dimension, kind of a higher dimension of consciousness. You just try it, try it for one week, for one week, and strictly, no illicit sex, no meat eating, no intoxication, no gambling, for one week, just try it cheerfully, and see what it does for your consciousness. If you do, you'll be so alive, and you say, I'm gonna do this, keep doing this, it's really wonderful. Just gotta put a little faith and try, give it a try. Krishna Consciousness works, if you work the process, you'll experience the result. You'll get the higher.
Yeah, that's correct, but how will you give up that petty weakness of the heart? Suppose I have, I want to see like different.
Don't worry about being into the heart, just intelligently engage yourself in Krishna's service. And then, your heart will become strong, you get a higher taste. You need to, the problem is, Manoj, you're not getting the higher taste, that's the problem. Because you're mixing in sense gratification, that's why it's easy to get the, the strength and the enthusiasm to practice it, once you get the higher taste. For one week, strictly follow the principles, and you'll get a higher taste, and you go, wow, this is pretty good, I'm gonna keep doing this. But you're not, you're not letting yourself get the higher taste, you're putting poison in to the nectar. You're mixing poison into the nectar, no wonder you're not getting the taste.
But sometimes the senses are so strong, that they, they keep us, I mean, disturbing us that to, to means to satisfy the senses. So how to control the...
Tell the senses to be quiet, and then stop bothering you. Okay, senses, just be quiet and don't bother me. You're, I'm not you, you're not me, you're some, something external to my actual self, stop bothering me. Lust, get out, Mr. Lust, get out, Mr. Anger, get out, Mr. Greed, get out, I don't, you're not welcome in the, in the, in the, in my heart. Mr. Lust, you're not welcome in my heart, get out of here, and don't ever come back again, gotta become strong. Tell him to get out, tell these material desires, get, get out of your lives, get out of here, you're not welcome.
Oh, one thing Maharajee, you see, like, we have endured thousands, like, thousands of thousands of lifetime. And in the, we have endured so many lifetime, enduring sense gratification, and now we will say, stop for a time being. So is it possible, is it possible?
Yeah, this, because you've come in contact with these teachings of Shilpa Pavada, the most powerful teachings for liberating the living entities from the cycle of birth and death. You can get out now in this one lifetime, after millions of lifetime, now you can get out. You see, Papa's teachings are here, take advantage of Papa's mercy, and you can become a pure devotee of Krishna, qualified to see Krishna face to face, eye to eye.
Okay, 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 thank you.
Hare Krishna, Pravji, I'll just take one or two questions from the audience who are sitting right now here in person. So, one question is from Prashant Sababhamaprabhu, and he's asking, how can I overcome the habit of crookedness? And the issue of considering guru a normal person, an ordinary person?
The first thing, if you understand that crookedness is making you miserable. Why would you want to continue being miserable? Crookedness makes you miserable. So why, whenever I can punish myself, I'm holding on to crookedness? That's the first thing, crookedness is stupid. You're torturing yourself by being crooked. And the second, second thing is how to understand the spiritual master is not an ordinary person? Well, the spiritual master, if he's actually a real spiritual master, that means he's purely representing the previous acharyas. If he's not purely representing the previous acharyas, he's not a bona fide spiritual master. He's just a so-called spiritual master. But a genuine spiritual master is purely representing the previous acharyas. Just like somebody may send you a cashier's check for one million dollars, okay? Or ten, ten billion rupees, maybe in India, we say ten billion rupees. So, and some, some postal worker comes, delivers to you, an honest postal, postal worker. So these bona fide spiritual masters, this, this, this is the honest, he's not God, but he's an honest worker who's purely giving you what God says, without adding or subtracting. The honest postal worker doesn't try to steal the money, try to give you less than you're supposed to be getting, he just, whatever is there, he honestly gives it to you. So the bona fide spiritual master, the one who is honestly giving you what he has received from his spiritual master, who is honestly giving what he received from his spiritual master, back, 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 back to Krishna, the original spiritual master. So we have an unbroken chain of the cyplical succession, going back to Lord Krishna, coming through Lord Ramak, coming down to the ghost, to dor chitanyama, the ghost Swami Zimadavam, down to Bhakti Manav, Bhakti Sadhana Saraswati, the divine grace Shilpa Pavada. We have an unbroken line of cyplical succession. So if one is purely giving you what Papa has given you, that person is a bona fide spiritual master. Without adding to or subtracting, he's just purely giving you what Papa has given, without any changes, without any adulterations. That's a bona fide spiritual master. It's a simple thing. If someone is purely giving you what has been, what has been given by Papa, and that can, that you have to, how do you know? You have to read Papa's books. Is this person a living, is this person purely giving me what's in Papa's books? If he is, he's not an ordinary person, he's a bona fide spiritual master. But if you haven't read the books, how would you know? How would you know to tell the difference? By the tila, with a smile on the face, no. You have to see, you have to read Papa's books, you have to see who is purely giving me what is in Papa's books. That person is a bona fide spiritual master, okay?
Thank you very much, Pravji, one more question from Ritesh. How to remember Krishna always? During the office work, during the daily routines, how can we always remember Krishna?
In your office, put a picture of Krishna on your desk. So you know who you're doing the work for, you're not working for your sense gratification. You're working to main, to earn some money, so you can have a Krishna conscious livestock, or you and your family, and so you can give support to Iskandar. That's why, that's why you're working, you have to always remember, why am I working this job? Am I working to please the boss? No, I'm working to please the ultimate boss, Krishna. Krishna is my actual boss, not the so-called manager here. You have to understand who the actual boss is, and work for your boss, Krishna.
Thank you, Pravji, we'll take our next question from online audience, Pradeep Prabhu, Padmanol Shindru, please go ahead, unmute yourself.
Hare Krishna. Beyond, beyond, serving the temple, doing the chanting, reading the book, and also sometimes you are not getting the Krishna consciousness achieved what is required. What may be the reason for that? Because you are following the process accurately.
Namaparads. If you're chanting and not tasting the nectar, you're committing namaparads. You have to see, you have to study the ten offenses and see what you're doing, which is, which is, what offenses you're committing. Because if you're not committing offenses, you will taste unlimited nectar in every syllable. You're not tasting unlimited nectar in every syllable, you're committing namaparads, you have to see what offenses you're committing.
I don't know, but I think we are, I think I'm following everything, because maybe from the, not from the mind, but actually.
Ah, you're, you're not tasting the nectar, you're doing something wrong. Because there's unlimited nectar in every syllable. Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, you're not tasting the nectar, you're doing something wrong. You're committing offenses against the name.
How can that be read out?
Well, you have to, somebody, you have to, you have to tell him, find it, find out exactly what you're doing, talk, talk to somebody who, who can help you figure it out. You know, are you following this, are you, what time you get up in the morning?
Hmm, four thirty.
You have Mangala Rati every day?
Occasionally five o'clock, online every day, but most of them.
Every day, okay. Are you having, are you, are you married?
No.
Not married, okay. So, I don't have time to go through it all now, but actually, that's what you need to do, have a sit down with somebody and find out exactly what you're doing wrong. You just look at all, you have to look at the ten offenses and see what you're doing wrong. You have complete faith that Krishna and his name are the same? With the name Krishna and the person Krishna, one and the same?
Yes.
What time you chant your japa?
Hmm, around six, from night, from six to eight.
So you're working a job, you're working a job?
Yeah, working the job.
I see.
Most probably, sometimes in the traveling also, I chant, traveling only most of the rounds.
You chant while you're traveling?
Yeah, some rounds in, at home, some rounds are traveling.
The best thing, what I recommend, what I do is I get up early and chant my rounds before Mangala Rati. And there's no distractions at all. I get up early, then you can take it, and grab a nap later on, of course, you're working, it'd be difficult, that, what I do, I get up early, like at one thirty in the morning, I chant my rounds and study before Mangala Rati, and then I wake the deities. The thing is, you have to, you can try getting up a little earlier and chanting rounds before Mangala Rati. Their early morning, it's before sunrise, the early, early morning, that's very, it's easier to go deep, 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 deep in a namabhuti, that's what you need to do. Try getting up, maybe a half hour earlier, going to bed earlier, what time you go to bed at night?
Hmm, ten thirty, eleven.
Oh, that's horrible. What time you get home from work?
Pardon?
What time you get home from where?
From seven o'clock.
And you stay up till eleven thirty, no, that's horrible, you should go to bed by nine thirty.
Yeah, but I come at eight o'clock, and then again, after taking bath, I chant a few rounds, that is evening.
Oh, you should be chanting in the morning, not the evening, the evening you should be reading. You mean extra rounds, or you're sixteen rounds?
Extra rounds.
Oh, extra rounds, is it? You need to go to bed as early as possible and get up earlier in the morning, that'll help you a lot, the early morning is very powerful, very powerful. Go to bed, don't stay up to ten thirty, eleven, you come home and take, take some pashad, and go to bed as soon as possible. Get up very early in the morning, that's, that's when you can really get the taste of the early morning hours, okay?
Okay, I'll try for the day. And second thing, the temptations, because since I'm unmarried, sometimes I get temptation, not every time, but sometimes, the temptations and then...
Temptation for what?
Temptation from, you should say, opposite sex, or sometimes we're talking with anger and everything.
Yeah, you have to control yourself, and the sex, spit at the thought of sex. Not literally, but in your mind, you just spit at the thought of sex. See, the whole society, the whole, whole society is sexually oriented, you gotta, you have to be completely aloof from that whole thing. If your mind, your mind gets lusty, just spit at the thought of sex within your mind, spit at it within your mind. Spit at the damn thing, thoughts of sex life, and and you have to, mind, words, anger, tongue, belly, and genitals, you have to keep them all under control. You must always be thinking, your mind, words, anger... You must always be thinking, your mind words, anger, tongue, belly, and genitals should be brought under control for the pleasure of guru and Krishna. You have to understand that Krishna is present with you at every minute. He sees everything you're doing, he knows everything you're thinking. You have to, saying Krishna is with me right now, how can I think, speak, and act in such a way that will please Him? Always act to the pleasure of Krishna, because He's with you at every minute. Okay?
Yeah, I'll talk. Thank you, Maharajee.
So take advantage of Krishna's association. Be a good devotee for Krishna's pleasure at every minute, even at work. Okay?
Yeah.
Next?
Thank you, Maharajee.
Okay, next. We have about six minutes left.
Hare Krishna, Pravusi. So question is on the Zoom chat from Shikhar and Deepasha. They're asking, "How can we develop taste in chanting?"
Yeah, the way they... You get taste in chanting, you rise early in the morning and chant as early as possible. I get up at one, I start chanting at 1:30 in the morning, for example. I advise you to get up better, but... To get taste in chanting, strictly follow the principles and chant early, early in the day as possible. And you can beg Krishna, "My dear Lord, please bless me. I can actually embellish the taste of Your sweet holy name. Right now, I'm chanting, but it's so superficial, I'm not tasting the nectar. My dear Krishna, please, please bless me. I can truly enter into the nectar of Your name." Actually, it's given by Lord Chitanyamaa, that very easy instructions. Chanada peesani chena, tarara peesahishnuna, amanina madhadiyana, kirtanaya sadhadi. One should chant the holy name of the Lord in a humble state of mind, thinking himself lower than the straw on the street, being ready to offer all respect to others, not expecting even the slightest tins of respect for oneself. In such a state of mind, one can taste unlimited nectar and chase the holy name of the Lord constantly. So if you take that instruction, embrace it with your heart and soul, and always be offering all respect to others without expecting any respect for yourself, you'll be able to get unlimited nectar when you go, Hare Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare. Hari Krishna, Hare Krishna, 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 Hare, Hare, Hari Rama, Hari Naama, Naama, Naama. Okay?
Pravusi, there are several questions on the line of temptations, dealing with temptations. Just like Padmalushan Prabhu asks us now, "How can we really achieve Krishna in this day and time when there are so many temptations out there? Simultaneously, there is an expectation from us to maintain a certain standard of purity, which is becoming more and more incompatible and difficult as the days are progressing."
Actually, it becomes easier as the days are progressing. If you're sincerely desiring pure devotional service, "My dear Krishna, please bless me with pure devotional service." If you're intensely begging, if you actually design... You have to understand, your only happiness is pure devotional service. Therefore, you should beg Krishna for pure devotional service. If you do, the temptation will just fade away. Why should I indulge my senses, which is just gonna hurt my spiritual life? Why should I hurt my spiritual life by a little temporary pleasure in my tongue, my belly, and my genitals? Why should I hurt my spiritual life? This material body is gonna fall away by the wayside. It's just a costume I'm wearing right now, it's not me. Why should I be so concerned about giving it some special pleasures beyond its maintenance? It doesn't make any sense, it's stupid. You don't want to give yourself any pleasures beyond the maintenance. It's absolutely stupid. Because all you're doing is reinforcing your false identification with this material body, which is not you. Why you identify with somebody that gets old, gets sick, and dies? That's stupid. You're an eternal spiritual being, qualitatively one with Krishna. You're an eternal youth. And you want to misidentify with a rotting corpse? How stupid is that? So don't be stupid, don't be an idiot. Don't be a slave of sense gratification. Tell sense gratification, "Get lost, you're not welcome in my life." Sense gratification, "Get out of here and don't you ever come back again. I have one business only, that is to please my spiritual master, Krishna, for all eternity." Next?
Thank you so much, Pravusi. I see there are three more minutes. In case if you would have somewhat time, then I can take more questions. And we also wanted to acknowledge all the participants. Of course, I'm not gonna take the name of it, but the purpose that we have come together is to, for the concluding ceremony of this Bhagavad Gita program that your disciple, Mother Parabakti, had organized, where more than 150 participants on the occasion of Gita Janthi. It started post-Janmashmi last year. And in the span of three and a half months, approximately around 150 participants read through the whole Bhagavad Gita. They had quizzes and everything that we had organized. So I can address that. Or if you would like, we can take one more question, depending on...
Have a question. One more question.
Yes, yes, sure, Pravusi, thank you so much. So there is another question on the chat from Govind Sadhana. So her, I don't know, his or her question is, "What are the top three most common impediments for Atmas fully going all the way to Krishna Loka, other than the material desires that create material bodies?"
Well, it depends on the individual, but lust is pretty heavy for everybody. It's tendency to be lusty, they want to enjoy sex pleasure. That's a real big impediment for everyone. So we have to watch out for that. Lust, anger, being angry, I want things my way. I want, everything should be done the way that I want it to be done. Lust and anger and greed, those are three big enemies. If you can conquer lust, anger, and greed, you're in a good shape to actually go back to home, back to God as soon as possible. Okay?
Thank you, Pravusi. So with your due permission, I'll just show this two, three minutes, hardly a minute presentation. And if Mother Parabakti, you're there, just ping me so I can put you onto the screen also. So just one second. So that all the participants get the opportunity to receive your blessings, Pravusi. So I'll just show out the presentation quickly. Hare Krishna. So Mother Parabakti had actually conducted this program along with some of us from last September 2021 to December, where we had 75 mothers, 43 prabhus, and 30 kids reading through the complete Bhagavad Gita as it is by His Divine Grace, Sivaktaudanta Swami Shilpa Prabhupada. We had, for every chapter, there was an overview class and also quizzes for every chapter of Bhagavad Gita. Mother Parabakti had actually made a kind of a... She had made a simpler format for Bhagavad Gita reading for kids. And she had conducted it that way. So we will not have the time here to read all of your names, but just wanted to show your names on the screen so that Pravusi is aware, all of your sincere effort to read through this complete Bhagavad Gita. So there are 75 mothers. And then followed up with 43 prabhus, who also read through the complete Bhagavad Gita. And 30 kids. And many of them have read it for the first time, Pravusi. And many of them said, actually, we tried many times before but could not complete reading Bhagavad Gita. But because we did this group activity where every day they were reading assignments, so they could go ahead and complete it. And Mother Parabakti was leading that. After this program, Pravusi, we are starting a Shimad Bhagavatam course now in English and Hindi. For next one year, approximately 11 months, we'll be covering the first three cantos of Shimad Bhagavatam. Every single line, every single word of Shilpa Prabhupada's writing would be read. And there would be an overview classes for every chapter of Shimad Bhagavatam in English and Hindi like that. So with this, I wanted to take your blessing as well as also your words of encouragement for participants. If you would like to say something, I'm not...
Yes. Some people had some questions, they might have asked questions, I couldn't answer them, but they can send me an email to... The email address is sd, like San Krishandas, sd@worldleader.com. If anybody got a question that I didn't ask in the class, they can send me an email, sd@worldleader.com.
Thank you, Pravusi. We have posted the email here and devotees can write to you. I see there is one hand up, Om Mother Midhavani. Would you like to take a question or I should ask her to send you an email?
Well... Email, email. One question. Hi, all night. We have one question. That was my question. Yeah.
So, sure, sure. Thank you so much, Pravusi. And thank you, everyone, for joining in. I know we, our Zoom account got filled out quickly. We'll share this recording of Pravusi's class up on our YouTube channel. You'll get the link. And thank you so much, Pravusi, for taking out your time. And if you have permission, if you permit, then we would like to invite you again for this Shimad Bhagavatam program, where you can come and address to all of us and take question and answer. We all used to have the fortune of having to get a chance to meet you in person, when you would come at least twice in a year to Pune. But because of COVID, that's just not happening. But we are looking forward to have your association soon. So thank you so much, Pravusi, for joining in.
Thank you very much. Bye-bye, Maharajee.
Hare Krishna, Dharmasmanam.
Naam.
Thank you, everyone, for joining in for today. And those of you who would like to know more about this course, they can go to this particular website where they can sign up. And the YouTube link would be shared on Evol Pune YouTube channel. I don't have the YouTube link here right now, but you can search it out, where you'll find this recording, upload it maybe by today or tomorrow. And those of you interested for this Bhagavatam program, please go on this website and you'll get the link to sign up for this program. Thank you so much for joining in once again, Hare Krishna.